City management in terms of Resolution A that have to do with budget as well. So I think that we are weighing both sides to see where we fall. I think that the fact that the preliminary site plan approval would not be held up either way. If there's a way to limit, I guess, the length of the workshop, which we've talked a little bit about tonight, as well as what we're expecting to come from that. I think that the way that the language falls here in Resolution B without the additional discussion that we've had tonight could seem very broad. But I think if there are specific things that need to be accomplished, or as Councilwoman Kerwin put it, some last unresolved matters that just weren't able to be dealt with, I think that that could be taken care of in a limited workshop. So if that's the intent of this resolution, or there's additional language that we can add to make sure that happens, I would support that.
Further discussion of the substitute motion?
Mayor.
Councilman Slater?
I agree that maybe we should try to get something in the Resolution B to be more restrictive so that we don't waste a lot of time and money trying to accomplish what's been discussed tonight.
Someone want to add wording that indicates a half-day design workshop and after the we hear on the environmental impact?
Madam Mayor.
Information? Yes.
I think that Councilmember Beltrameini really caught both pieces. When you talked about it being holistic, because if there was a need to involve the community at large and so on, that would be the time to do it one time, one fell. Mr. Sevigny may be responsible.
Yeah, hopefully I'm not stating the obvious. But I think it's important to remember that the length of the meeting does have an impact on cost, but really the results of the meeting and how significant the changes are following the workshop, that has a direct effect on the cost. So I just wanted to keep that in mind, that as long as what is moved forward is consistent with what you see before you this evening and not a radical departure, I think we're in pretty good shape. Because I think we've got great bones here to build on. If we start departing from that, then the costs are really going to escalate.
That was my concern, and I think I expressed that.
I don't...
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
I don't know exactly how to word this. Does the clerk have something drafted?
No. I believe that it would be proper at this time to vote on the substitution and then make the amendment to that motion after you substitute it.
Then amend the substituted motion.
Okay. So the motion before us is a substitute motion, as-is. And then if we want to add things, we'll make the amendment after. Okay? All right? Mrs. Bartholomew, vote?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Could I ask a question? Or do I have to vote?
If it's to clarify your vote, you may ask a question.
If I vote yes on this and then we don't pass anything else, I'm stuck with this, right?
Another motion, amendment can be offered.
I know, but if that amendment doesn't pass...
Then you could substitute another motion back to A. Mayor Schilling?
No.
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Amendment would be in order at this time, if you wish to add. Councilwoman Beltrameini?
I'm trying to figure out, and I'd like some help from the clerk if I could have it. I believe that this second-to-the-last paragraph where it says, "Be it further resolved that the Troy City Council hereby directs city management to schedule the workshop so that the results of the workshop can be presented to the Troy City Council and Birmingham's Planning Board prior to final site plan approval." If in that scheduling, we can say, "In conjunction with any design elements that may have to be made after the environmental statement critique is returned," wherever that goes in there, I think that that's what we wanted to do, was make it a single design workshop so that it would be appropriate in one time. Yes.
Does that work?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameini, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, but I need the placement for the resolution to read it. I don't know where it goes. Then I have a question.
Should we take five minutes?
No, I think she's... Because it is 10:27, we have our other items to do. Councilman Slater?
I just have a problem with these bullet points, in particular the last one. Offering additional cost-effective, sustainable design features.
It's an offer.
I'd like to strike that.
That would be an additional amendment?
One at a time.
Added in? Well, I guess while she's working on it, I'll ask my question. Mr. Zerlike, after the workshop and the final plans are presented back to city council, city council has a vote at that time, or it's already decided, the staff decides?
I believe that after preliminary site plan approval, city staff, the planning department, has final site plan approval.
That's what I thought, yes. So in other words, after the changes are all made, this will not come back to us again. It'll come back so that we can see it, but as far as having a vote on it, we won't. Mr. Zerlike?
For clarification, could I please ask Brent to go to the microphone and mechanically indicate what's going to happen?
Okay.
And include the federal review as well with an EA.
The city council this evening, if they went with Resolution B, would be granting preliminary site plan approval, subject to a design workshop being held in the future. Following preliminary site plan approval this evening, we would submit, the city would submit to the state of Michigan, the preliminary site plan that was approved this evening for inclusion into the environmental assessment, that whole process, to complete that. After that was completed, we would hold a design workshop. I would suggest that the product that comes out of the design workshop shall be consistent with what was approved this evening. It cannot be radically departed from that because now we're inconsistent with the environmental assessment. At that point in the future, we can hold the design workshop and have the grant funding assist in compensating for the additional costs of the redesign. Once we have the workshop, have the results of the workshop, modify the plans accordingly, it will go through the final site plan approval process, and the final sign-off for that is myself. So it's an administrative approval. We could send it to the city council as a courtesy to show you what was, you know, what the final product was, but there's no requirement that it go to council. It's administrative approval. I hope that was clear.
Further clarification?
As we all know, a site plan is two-dimensional, the specification is three-dimensional. The environmental assessment, that's also two-dimensional?
Steve knows a lot more about this process than I do. It's a state process associated with engineering projects.
Well, it is somewhat three-dimensional, as we're talking about air, land, and groundwater impacts and so on and so forth. So it is three-dimensional, and this is a former brownfield site. There is a lot to look at in that regard, and there are some existing pockets on the site now that are contaminated to a certain level. We need to do a do-care plan as to how those areas of contamination are going to be safeguarded, and we have to, part of this do-care plan to describe how those areas will be safeguarded during construction as well. So it is, I guess, more than a two-dimensional review. It's three-dimensional, in my opinion.
The concern I have is threefold. It's an operational definition of compatibility that we do not control, feds do, and it's time and it's money. So we submit our plan in place to the feds for an environmental review. They give it back to us and say, "Here's what you have to do now it's approved." We then go to a design committee, and the elements of that site planned are changed to any degree. At what point does the site plan, does the environmental assessment for that site plan possibly face risk of yet another, pardon me, of yet another environmental assessment because the variables have changed so much that it's a different plan? And if you don't know the answer to that question, I think we're wasting our time here.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Anybody, help out the experts. Do you know the answer to that question?
If I may...
Mr. Van Det?
The variables that could change that would drastically affect the environmental review would be the size or location of the building. The skin of the building is irrelevant. Whether we have a vertical element or a sculpture is irrelevant, but the size and the location of the building is critical. The circulation, the improvements to the roads, not the improvements themselves, but their location is critical. This site is laid out in part to avoid those areas that we know continue to have a level of contamination. So I think for the most part, the most critical item is the size and location of the building itself.
Another question then. So if we were to isolate those variables that would not, that can be modified on the site plan, that the environmental assessment folks could take a look at and say, "Well, I'm okay with these changes," are you talking about the elevation?
No, not the elevation of the building, not the facade of the building. That would not be a...
What I'm saying, Steve, is that if we were to isolate the variables that the feds wouldn't care if we modified, once they approved, they've got a site plan that has all these variables on there. And they say, "Okay, this site plan's approved. You can change the following things, and we don't care. It's still approved." What things can we change, and they won't care?
Well, that's difficult to say, and we would have to pose that question to them as to what things we could change.
Okay. So then, is it possible to have the site plan go to the feds, have an environmental assessment, have an eighth or ninth meeting to look at our 24 square-foot building, and then have that go back to the feds, and they could say, "You've changed too many variables. Resubmit."
I would not rule that out. It's entirely possible. At this, dealing with the feds on this particular issue, they're handling a very, very large number of projects because of the stimulus money that is out there, and they are working their way through these issues and trying to fast-track them as best they can. But it's somewhat new to them to handle the size and scope of these projects, and it's really been an up-and-down kind of a process. And it's, if we're looking for consistency in the same answer two weeks after the first answer, we're just not seeing that so far. It's unpredictable.
Right. Yes, and my concern, in addition to all of that, is that we worked very hard to get the funding for this project, and if something were to change with where the funding would not come forward, then as far as I'm concerned, the whole project would be gone, and we've wasted the money that we have spent already on it. That is my additional concern in trying to delay rather than moving forward with the project.
Madam Mayor.
So I have to express that. Councilwoman Kerwin?
However, be passed, and we're working on the amendment on that. I will say, though, that all those points that the manager just brought up would be true with any preliminary site plan. If we were a preliminary site plan on a wetlands, and this was the plan that was passed, it would go off and come back, and they would say, "Well, actually, you're going to have to tweak it around there." That's what preliminary site plan means. So although we hear these, you know, "What if they come back?" Of course they may come back. It is a brownfield site. We may find that. However, the intent of Resolution B is not to start at the beginning again. It was simply to come up with some suggestions which would make a quality project, and they were not afforded that in that last final meeting. And that's what this is about.
Mr. Zerlike?
I respectfully disagree. The site plan that would go to the environmental assessment, which branch is that you're going to go to?
The Federal Railway Administration or Association Administration, FRA.
And they're going to take how long to review this?
What do you think, Steve?
Well, we've been at this for about six, seven months now already, and we have received some preliminary comments, but they're holding back on giving official comments until they work through. They're actually working on the Dearborn Station and one other project.
And the Battle Creek Station.
Battle Creek Station. And they're using them, they're starting with them as a model of what their comments are generally going to be shaped around, and then we'll be following the lead on that. So it's taken quite a bit of time.
We'll call it seven months. It's going to take seven months. The difference between what you're trying to fashion here and the example just given is that we could take a preliminary site plan approval, as-is, give it to the environmental assessment people, the Federal Railway Administration, and they could take their seven months and give it back and say, "Make these five changes," and we'll say, "Okay." Now, what I'm getting at is called an intervening variable that we have no control over regardless of how you fashion your resolution. You could take the site plan, approve it with these future conditions, send it to the EA. Seven months later, it comes back, it says, "You're good to go, guys." Then you have, on your own volition, you initiate another site plan meeting for more input, and you modify it, okay? And then Phil Hutter recalls and says, "Oh, by the way, we made these 17 modifications." They may say, and it's out of our control, "Okay, give us seven more months, and we'll take a look at it." You need to know that before you make a decision. And that's, my job is to let you know some of the unintended consequences. That's one of them. My own staff, our experts, they could not tell me what variables could be isolated that would not change the EA. Thank you.
Where are we standing now?
The resolution that we believe captures your desires is, resolve that Troy City Council hereby amends Resolution B as recommended by the Planning Commission by inserting, end quotes, "After the results of the environmental assessment so that the changes required by the environmental assessment may be made in conjunction with any enhancements outlined in the workshop and then presented as a whole to Troy City Council and Birmingham's Planning Board prior to final site plan approval," end quotes. This would be after the word "workshop," and then strike all of the remaining, remainder of the motion.
Except the Troy City Council Planning Board. Except the Troy City Council Planning Board for final approval.
We inserted that in there.
Further discussion on the motion?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
While I understand the city manager's concerns, environmental assessments, I agree with Councilwoman Kerwin. Typically, it's as Mr. Van Det said, bulk, additional, appurvious surfaces, all of those kinds of things. And I don't see, with perhaps the exception of the articulation of the building facade, that could change the footprint, and you might not want to go there, quite honestly. And I would admonish the Planning Commission that if we give you this tool, use it wisely, please use it wisely. I know that it was not the intention of our recommending body to add to the timeframe, and I think that's why it specifically says, "Approve this." We're only thinking minor things. And while I understand the concern about offering other cost-effective, sustainable elements, if that can't be done within this assessment, it can't be done. I mean, that's, you said to us, "Approve this preliminary site plan." So that is going to tie your hands. And the best shot you have of not costing the city money and doing what you want to do is to do it with the environmental assessment. So if we are going to give our recommending bodies the tools that they want to polish this plan, we have to do it in the most frugal way possible. And that may tie your hands a little bit, but quite honestly, at this point, that's the best I'm willing to do. I'm not going to give you free rein with this and cost the city another $10,000 and put this any further behind. So that's the amendment as it stands. It may fly, it may not.
Support.
Further discussion of the amendment, as moved and seconded?
Mayor.
Councilman Slater?
Somebody read it for me, in its locality.
The amendment? The entire motion, entire resolution?
Yes.
If the amendment passes, the second, be it further resolved, will read as, "Be it further resolved that the Troy City Council hereby directs city management to schedule the workshop after the results of the environmental assessment so that changes required by the environmental assessment may be made in conjunction with any enhancements outlined at the workshop and then presented as a whole to the Troy City Council and Birmingham Planning Board prior to final site plan approval."
And that leaves all the bullets still in place, correct?
Leaves the rest of the motion intact.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Okay. I think I've already indicated my concerns several times about this motion, so I will be voting against the amendment also. Councilwoman McGinnis?
And just a final thought. I think that anyone that has stated that they would be in favor of the Resolution B as amended has made it very clear that their understanding is that it will be, any discussions at the design workshop would be in conjunction with the foundation that's already been built and the plans that we have here before us today. I think additionally, while there may be some unknowns that we're discussing in terms of this being a new process for everyone involved, I would imagine that at some point, as we get from where we are now to the results of the, any feedback that we get from the federal government, any direction that they give us in terms of making changes would be followed by the Planning Commission and any discussions at the design workshop as well. So if they're, if we're given further instruction in terms of making any of these changes or more information is given to us, then I would imagine that the Planning Commission should follow that when the information is given.
Vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
On the amendment? Councilmember Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
No.
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes this item.
Mayor, you have an amended main motion now.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Pardon me.
Mayor Schilling?
On the amended resolution?
amended main motion.
No.
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now we're concluded with that item, and we go to regular business, towing administrative fees. We have a resolution in front of us.
Right.
Steve?
Thank you.
I want to keep by.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Beltrameini?
Whereas the Troy Police Department charges an administrative fee of $10 for towed and impounded vehicles, whereas the current administrative fee is significantly less than the actual costs incurred by the city, and the average rate charged by many, charged by many area police departments, and whereas city council has the discretion to change the administrative fee at any time. Therefore, be it resolved that the Troy City Council hereby approves the increase of the administrative fee for towed and impounded vehicles from $10 to $30.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameini, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as read. One change uncharged. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. I-6, scheduling a special meeting on October 11th with Mr. Barry Dem for hour and a half.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis?
I move the resolution as printed.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis. Who was the second? Second by Councilwoman Beltrameini. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. I-7 is the municipal credit and community credit agreement. Mayor Potem Fleming?
Resolve that Troy City Council hereby approves the request to transfer municipal credit funds in the amount of $76,084 and community credit funds in the amount of $110,732 are the amount transferred to the city from SMART to Troy Medigo Plus for the operation of transportation service for senior citizens and persons with disabilities, and be it further resolved that Troy City Council hereby authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the documents, copies of which shall be attached to the original minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Potem Fleming, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is our consent agenda. The council, do you have any items you want to have exempted? Hearing none, could we have a resolution to approve all?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Kerwin?
That Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Kerwin, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis, that we approve all of the consent agenda items as presented. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameini?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Memorandums? Any comments? Council referrals, council comments?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameini?
I have a couple of short things. The first thing is, and I didn't want to prolong the reaction to public comment tonight, but one of the speakers showed a house in Clausen, and then a house, again, half as but one of the speakers showed a house in Clausen, and then a house again, half as much, or half again as much in Troy, and said, see, you get more money. And I wanted to ask if I could, Mr. Lakari, because if we have the lowest tax rate, I don't think we do get more money. If a house sells for $140,000 in Clausen, what's the tax rate on that house?
Actually, it's quite a bit higher than I thought it was. I originally told you about $14, it's closer to $19 per thousand, and that house generates $1,316 in city taxes in Clausen, and the comparison was a $220,000 house in Troy, which generates $1,021 to the city, so we actually get $295 less than that house that costs $80,000 less generates for Clausen. And additionally, if you really wanted to spend $1,316 in city taxes, you'd have to buy a $284,000 house here in Troy instead of a $140,000 house in Clausen.
What's their tax rate in Clausen?
It's 18.7976, it's twice as much as ours.
Right.
And we still do have the lowest city tax rate in the tri-county area.
Thank you, that was the other thing, the other, I don't, I don't know how many of you read USA Today, but one of the articles in today's paper, and I thought it was interesting because Mr. Burke also brought up the distracted driving ordinance, there was a recent study done, I believe by the University of Utah, that talked about distracted driving in their sample, which was substantial, caused the same impairment as being impaired with a .08 alcohol level. So distracted driving is a problem, and the article went on to talk about teens in particular, and how they perceive this, because texting and eating and talking on the telephone are all part of their normal activities in a car, and how less than 50% of them think that that will create an accident where they will actually die. So I, I still support our distracted driving ordinance, I think it's the right thing to do, if 20% of your injury accidents are caused by distracted driving, we have a responsibility to make the community safer.
Further council comments? Seeing none, then we'll be in recess while we go in the other room for the study session. We're back in session, and we're gonna request the short version.
All the way from Colorado.
Because that's how we do best, when we have a short version. We don't do best, we have a long version.
Well, more than anything, you know, I just want-
Does everybody want to say their names?
Absolutely. David Thompson with Safe Belt, and we've met before.
Yes, but you have new facial hair.
It's changed, I kind of go back and forth, so.
Yeah, I know.
This is Steve Byrne, Steve is Safe Belt's building official, taking the technical lead here in the office, and definitely wanted all of you to have a chance to meet Steve firsthand. And then Matt Neuer is our director of operations, Matt has led the transition operation up here, providing, you know, daily support for Steve as we, you know, continue to make improvements along the way. So that's, that's the crew we've brought in. And more than anything, just wanted to, you know, be able to provide you an update as to the, you know, the progress that we've made to date, outline that in the memo that I believe all of you have, so I'll, you know, I'm not gonna walk through those items one by one, which I think you'll, you'll all appreciate. The primary impact, or, you know, one of the most significant, I think, so far, has been the effectiveness of the staff that you had previously, the transition from the city over to Safe Belt. I've included some testimonials from some of the staff in that memo, the staff has just done a fantastic job. You know, I think everybody was a little bit apprehensive at first, but the support and involvement we've gotten from each of them has just been fantastic. You know, one of my favorite stories is they were reorganizing the office, and if you haven't had a chance to step back into the building department, I urge you to do so. But they were volunteering to come in on weekends to, you know, get furniture moved around, files cleaned out, so, you know, a real willingness, eagerness to, you know, to make sure that this was a success. The people part of it, I think, has absolutely been substantial. Also, want to make sure that you take a look at the Zucker Report summary that we put in here, and the city, the city made a tremendous investment in that effort, and, you know, we thought it was important to follow the recommendations, and, you know, for the most part, you know, we think the recommendations in the report were fairly spot-on and matched up very well with what our initial plans for the transition were. So you can, you can see pretty clearly what the, you know, what the results have been and will continue to be. And we really intend to follow that report and its recommendations through, and continue to update you as we go as to the progress against that, that report. Process improvements have been substantial, and we found a lot of opportunities to streamline, make things more efficient at the counter, you know, through the resulting process on inspections. Steve is really the person that is kind of spearheaded, making sure that, you know, we're looking every day at the interactions with the staff, with the community, with other departments, and I also want to tell you that your other departments through this process have really been fantastic, they've all been very supportive and helpful, and it's, you know, it's gone as well as we could possibly, possibly ask. And the other thing that you'll see kind of highlighted here, customer service aspects of the, of the department, we have really taken, put a lot of focus on that area, want to make sure that the, you know, service that's being delivered is consistent, friendly, and meeting or exceeding the standards that we've, we've put in the contract, and to this point, we've been able to do so with very few exceptions. We've had, you know, a couple of minor hiccups, of course, in the first couple of months, but nothing substantive at all. I hope that that matches up with what the rest of you are hearing out in the community as well. So that's, those are kind of the main issues, you know, I know that this was, you know, extremely challenging transition, it was a difficult decision for all of you, you know, the city of Troy is having to, you're ahead of the process in terms of making some of the difficult decisions, that makes you a target, and I hope that we're living up to, I feel like we're living up to, you know, our end of the agreement, and demonstrating that the choice that you made was a wise one, and, you know, we're backing that up.
Anything you learned from the Troy experience that you're going to use in other communities?
Yeah, quite a few things, you know, there is a, the integration of other departments in the process, I think that we realized pretty early on how critical that is, and we've actually been able to leverage those resources here better than we have elsewhere. And I, and I think it's partially a reflection on the quality of staff you have here, but I think it's also a function of, we've tended to kind of come in and felt like we needed to do it on our own, whereas here it required that involvement, so that's one of the most significant. And then the integration of staff, there is, there is something intangible about the way the transition here went, we haven't even necessarily been able, I don't think, to really put our fingers on what made it work so well, but we're, we're trying to, you know, kind of diagnose and figure out why that transition of personnel worked so well here, whereas other places, we typically will see, you know, within the first couple of months even, you find certain members of the staff that you just know aren't gonna grasp onto what you're trying to do, and here we haven't had that at all. So those have been the most significant differences that will apply elsewhere.
Okay, that's good. Councilor Kerwin?
Just really wanted to talk about the standards of excellence which you have, I think are really wonderful, not only the blending of Zucker, but that you have expectations for how people will be addressed at the counter, of course, you make the joke about the candy bowl, but I mean, it is a nice welcoming thing. One thing we recognize is, this is a difficult time for all of us, and that's the morale issue, that it's hard during a time of transition, however, I have to say, and it's true, because I used to kind of avoid going by that corner during our difficult times, and now, I mean, it's a one, the energy is so positive, it's got to be more than Feng Shui from changing the furniture, but a lot of people happily doing their job, eager, eager to meet greet, and the efficiency level is fabulous, so.
Thank you.
It really is working, and it's working to benefit all of us in the city, and, and it's a pleasant transition, it's worked out really well for us.
Thank you for that, yeah, we've, we've really noticed that the, you know, one of the, one of the differences that I think we can point to here is that the, you know, the foundation and the base expectations of the, of the staff that you had in the house were fairly well on the spot, you know, we weren't coming in and trying to rewrite the books on how to deliver service, so it really became more of an issue of, you know, how do we empower the same people, you know, give them the tools and the, the freedom for, you know, we don't go quite that broad, of course, but to give them the latitude that they need to get their job done effectively.
Any others? Madam Mayor Proton Fleming?
I appreciate the fact, I think it was a good move that you reached out to the construction community too, and had a little breakfast and invited people, that I thought that was, that was a nice touch. But I think part of the reason you alluded to it, this transition went so smooth, we had a good core group of people, I mean, to start with, you had class people to start with. But I've had occasions to come to that counter, and I know in the beginning you probably didn't know who I was, didn't matter, but I got good service, and I've heard that from other people, to this customer service, people that I know are coming in to see you, it's, it's been a very positive experience, so you're living up to the expectations. Question I have, do you have other opportunities within Michigan, do you see yourself expanding in Michigan, or is it pretty close?
Substantially, you know, there's a state-level issue that we've been working through, I don't want to go into great detail, but it's, it's created some hesitation for a number of communities, and we're very close to getting positive resolution to that issue. And I would expect that by the end of this year, we'll have other similar-sized cities onboard, either already signed or very close to signing, so the, the opportunities out there, I think a lot of people have been watching Troy to see how it went. We get, our staff got asked at a meeting, you know, this past week about how the transition went, and when they heard how well the transition had gone, their, their reaction was kind of, ah, and I think there's, you know, a certain trepidation that comes with that, but, you know, a number of communities have been waiting to see how this went, what the results were. And we met, you mentioned the builders, and we actually met with the Southeast Michigan Building Industry Association, what was that, about a month ago, I guess, you know, they invited us to their executive committee, and they were all fairly skeptical of us coming in, you know, I'm sure you've all heard that, and the reception that we- And, uh, the reception that we got and their reaction to what has gone on here was overwhelming.
Because they came and spoke at our council meeting, three of their members were there. They had an equation. They, they were dead set against it. So obviously doing something right because they've changed.
Yeah, they flipped. They, they actually-
And did you say, "I told you so"?
No, I don't do that.
I do.
Good.
So I, uh, yeah, at, at the end of that meeting, they were actually asking, "So how do we get you into Novi? How do we help get you into, how do we help get you into, how do we?" So they, they're believers, I think, now in the, in the model.
Okay. Council?
I do think it's great for you and it's great for us that you're such a good example, and now other communities wanna emulate that. Because that kinda keeps up, other communities have always wanted to emulate Troy. And so I feel good about that, you know? Um, and, and we were real hesitant to let this happen. But it's been great, and I was, I was glad to hear you say that, um, the Zucker Report was in line with what you had in your head to do. Because we did, we did pay for that, and I, I think it's probably more extensive than you would've done.
Agreed.
And I do notice that some things not yet started, but you can't start them all. I mean, there were what, a hundred things on that list? And so you can't start them all in three months. But I, I was more than tickled to see you working through the list and doing some of the things that I know other communities around the nation are already doing, and they're behind on, so.
It really served as a, you know, it's a, uh, project plan for us. I mean, it, it focuses in on the same areas, goes through the same steps. So it already included a lot of the data and a lot of the analysis that, you know, we typically put on its wall. So it was, it was very well done.
Right, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you, David. Steve, Matt, Stankich. Headed to Colorado tonight or tomorrow?
I head back tomorrow. Matt's gonna be here.
All right, Matt's sticking around, huh? I'll see you.
Good to see you.
Take care. Bye. Bye. Thanks, Sean.
Good job, guys.
Uh, I think it was council's plan to have our discussion before they come on. Do you want them at the table while we discuss?
I don't care. They've been here a long time. As far as I'm concerned.
I don't think we have any secrets.
I'm sorry.
Whatever you want to emphasize.
Well, it, it's just that, you're welcome to come and sit with us. But it's just that, I think council head said they wanted to have a discussion and then hear input. So don't give us a sales pitch yet.
Can I make an introduction now?
Okay, sure.
Okay. Uh, Craig Rapp is the director of ICMA Consulting Services out of Washington, DC. And Dan Maderes-
Leonard.
Leonard. I'm sorry, Leonard. Leonard Maderes is the director of Public Safety Consulting for ICMA, also out of Washington. And that's all I'll say until you finish.
Okay. Because the discussion at council table, uh, previous to inviting you, was for us to kinda have a general discussion and then go into the particulars of your, what you're suggesting. So I thought we should do that first. So council members that asked to, uh, have a discussion, do you wanna, someone wanna start? Uh, first of all, it's been suggested that we look at all of our restructuring, organizational restructuring, um, specifically looking at, uh, the department, ma- city manager's office and city attorney, the ones we hadn't looked at. Uh, and then supplement the ones that we had looked at, um, to see if we're on the right track, uh, so that we can say to the citizens, "Right, you know, this is what we've done. You asked us to, um, pare down and do things more efficiently, et cetera. And we have been working toward those, those goals." And, um, by having an outside, uh, look at things, uh, it, it gives it another, um, sense of, um, security for us, really, that we've been doing things. And if there are things that we need to change that we aren't doing correctly, we need to hear about those too. So that, that was the thinking originally in the proposal. And Councilman Slater, you had actually brought forward a proposal at the council table. So do you wanna talk about this or?
Sure. I don't have my proposal in front of me, uh, so I'll have to go through it right now.
John's got it. But you had talked about a third party. Why do you think a third party committee would be the best way to go?
Sure. I, um, I think I explained it in the first paragraph, uh, what my thought process was.
Second page.
Sure, second page. You know, not to reiterate what's in here, but, you know, I, uh, as I indicated, I've listened and watched my father's, you know, listen to his citizens. And I felt that there was this, uh, this sense internally and even externally that, of mistrust, that the city had not done everything that it could to streamline, to take a look at wages and benefits and take a look at every department within the city. And I thought that, that one of the reasons that the millage was defeated was that, um, whether it was true or not, there was a perception that was generated by a group that more could be done. And instead of giving us an opportunity to have a millage increase and take a look at internally some things that needed to be done, there was a decision to just not give us that opportunity for the millage. So I thought, one of the reason, one of the reasons I wanted to do this was that I wanted to get a third-party review. So that, and, and nothing against anybody within the city or the departments or anything, but give a sense to the community and to internally that we have done everything that we could possibly do to streamline, uh, get ourselves in line with neighboring communities, and at least let the community and the people that work here know that we've done everything that we possibly can. So, uh, in a nutshell, I proposed three things. One of them was a third-party review. I, when I wrote my proposal, it, it ended up a little different than what I had proposed. And I originally wanted to, uh, give grant, some, use some of the grant money that was Robin's, um, proposal to certain departments within the, the city. But I think John took it a step further. And, um, I didn't mention the city manager's, um, office or department and some of the other ones. But I think, I think it's a very good idea that we take a look at every department so that we can accomplish the goal that I am trying to achieve. And that's an independent review so it's a community. And internally, we look like we've done everything that we can. So proposal two was, was a completely separate issue that I think we're addressing fairly soon on the 11th. And then proposal three, I think John incorporated in his ICMA study to take a look and provide a summary report of all city departments and look at, um, comparables. And make sure that, um, our community here was in balance with the community surrounding us. And I think when I read the, the report, I think, uh, John accomplished all three, or I should say all two proposals. I know there was some debates on the funding. I went and talked to John about that myself personally. But I think that's something that we need to discuss tonight. But, um, I think I've come to the rationalization that, uh, you have to pay for what you get. And, you know, if we try to tone down the costs, we're gonna get something less than what's been proposed. And although the cost may seem high at this point, I think when you take a look at it in its totality, um, I think, I think it's okay with, with, you know. Now, where we get the funding, we'll do with that, I think maybe after debate. But, um, I was pleasantly surprised with the proposal. And in a nutshell, that's kind of what I had in mind, and I think it was accomplished.
Okay.
Do you have any questions you want to add?
I think perhaps the funding issue of where the funds would come from should be addressed since it was brought up. But it's not something that they, they're gonna talk about, of course. It's us talking about it.
Exactly.
We should do that at this point.
Right.
I, I think maybe if, if I could, the first thing, um, I, I thought we were in consensus that this was a direction to go. And I just don't think anybody at the table is, is in disagreement with that. So I guess it's just, is this what we should do? Is this how encompassing it should be? And I think maybe we should talk, we should discuss that first. Is this, is this what we wanna do? And then talk about costs and talk about maybe where we get it from. Personally, I, I, I liked the, the proposal. I liked the qualifications. I liked who was going to be doing the work. And, um, I don't really have anything negative to say about the report. So I'm gonna sit down.
So what's to go next? Council about to make?
I, and, and I'll tell you, what I hear out in the community is people who like you, John, say, "That's what you were hired to do. Why are we hiring somebody to do this? That's what you hired John to do. John's capable. Let John do it." And, and there is merit in that statement. Absolutely. Sorry, guys, but there is merit in that statement. But I, in, in more than a little, I agree with Dean. There's also a sense in the community out there that there's hidden money somewhere. And we've got nine times as many people as we need doing stuff, and we're paying them three times what they're worth. So given that sense, and I think that that is the louder. And, and negative messages are five times louder than positive messages. And therefore, for every person you've got saying the city's in a shambles, you've gotta have five people saying positive things. And we're not to that magnitude. So you're probably right that-
I think we saw some of the clarity.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, it's, it's, it's a consistent theme from certain-
Yeah.
-part of the community.
Yes.
And-
And I, I guess then the next question is, you know, this will be factual. And, and there probably are, I hope, changes that we haven't thought about, that we will get from people who compare cities with each other and with the private sector all the time. And at first, I, I was more than a little concerned that we were doing all the departments all in one package. On the other hand, that is the only way to do it if, if ultimately you need to remove the silos. If, if that's the goal, then you can't have the IT experts doing IT and the HR experts doing HR and the building experts doing building. You, you have to have a holistic thing. And then the question becomes, maybe, did we miss the boat? Maybe we should've done this a year ago instead of now. But Carlisle was very reasonably priced, so that's a good thing. Some of it's done. Um, and, and with the benefit package, because, and you know this personally, Michigan has significant restrictions on what you can do to public employee benefit. Constitutional restrictions. So what good does it do us to compare with other states? And, and I'm still not real copacetic about that. I'll, I'll be real honest with you. So that, that's still an issue with me on how far that net should be thrown. Because there, in some ways, there's just nothing we can do. But we do need some comparables, for sure. And we need to have some comparables by somebody who didn't help negotiate what we did.
And- Councilor Kirby?
And council member, you, you often point out that it's helpful to have someone with a different perspective out of state.
Yeah.
So although I know you say, you know, it, Michigan is unique, you, having had out-of-state experiences, have that ability to look at it a little bit differently, and that can be an aid. Uh, you said, I absolutely agree with, with a lot of what you said. Um, I do want to talk about specifically about breaking down the silos because we physically did that as a result of the Zucker Report. Let's break through some of those things. What's interesting about the Carlisle Wortman is when he looked at something that we should have been able to see, "Oh, look, your building department, are you building much anymore in Troy?" But that being is, that that suddenly became apparent. And I do believe that as we get those who have a national outlook and start looking at things, that that ki- that, that kind of thing will become apparent. Gee, is that really the best use of all those people in all those times? So, um, absolutely in agreement. I do think it needs to be holistic. We need, at the end of the day, to say we've looked at absolutely everything. Um, the city attorney who looked internally at her own department and said, you know, "There's really nothing else," has welcomed the idea of being looked at by outside. ICMA has the highest standards, in the same way as MML has very, very high standards. Um, ICMA is known for not only their ethics, but also their organization and keeping current. And I think that's what I particularly like, knowing best practices and what is happening right now. And that kind of thing, we need to be there. We can't be going, looking in the rearview mirror. We need to be going forward. And I think this will move us forward, not just for our own ability and security, as the mayor points out, for our own ability to say, "We are doing the very best that we can, and this is how this new paradigm looks." But to hear that in comparison, we are as well. So changes will have to happen. And that's, now's, now's the time to do it because we're in the change mode. So I, I, I welcome this.
Councilor McGinnis?
Um, I, again, I've supported this when we talked about it at the time that Dean brought his proposals. And, um, I still do, in light of the additional information that we've got. I think that there's a couple of things that need to be pointed out. We've done a lot so far this year, but we're kind of at a standstill at this point. And I think that we recognize some of the issues that we faced in the way that we looked at some of the first departments. And I would like the opportunity to streamline that process even more. And I think that the only way we're going to be able to do that is by looking at it, um, it, through a, you know, a different lens as far as data analysis and, and, um, taking that emotional piece out and giving it over to a different set of eyes. And also, I think that the benefit that we'll have is that different set of eyes will be looking at all these big pieces that we have left that make up our organization. So it's not going to be, at the end of this, we've got, um, you know, three or four different organizations that are gonna come to us and give us their breakdown of the departments that they reviewed. Because depending on what they've decided to focus on and what they've decided is most important, we could have three or four different proposals that add up to something that we can't fashion, we can't put together. So I think that the fact that we've got specific experts and specific methods of, of analyzing- So I think that the fact that we've got specific experts and specific methods of, of analyzation that we're going to use depending on the department, but yet they're all going to fit together in the end, so the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, I think is going to benefit us. And I think it's going to benefit us in, in a lot of different ways. I'm hoping that however we go forward, the department heads are still going to be involved, there's still going to be that information gathering that you're going to be doing in much the same way that our own city management did with other departments. But that emotional piece will be somewhat removed when you're providing that analysis. And I think that that's some of the problem maybe that we faced with the Zucker Report. You know, we, we've got all sorts of things that we had out there that were recommended that we couldn't get done with that emotional piece still in place. And, and, you know, once we got through that, we were able to kind of go through and, and start hammering off things on a list with, with a new perspective, I think, that people gain. So, I'm in support of it. Obviously, I think we have to have a discussion about cost-benefit analysis. But I, I think that the way it was presented seems like it would satisfy what we're trying to do with the remaining departments that we have to review before we can say we're done.
And...
Mayor?
I'm in favor of the proposal as having an overall look with an outside eye. I think it would serve us well, and it certainly will serve the staff well and the citizenry that we've taken that step. And I know that we're concerned about cost somewhat, and I, I want to get to that with council so that we can be comfortable that if we're going to go with ICMA, that we're comfortable, that we've got those costs covered and that it will actually bring us more benefit than, than the cost of what it is. And so I'm anxious for that discussion, but I, I think this is, the proposal that's before us is very clear, and it gives some specific examples with the police department. There are some other things that they have in, in each element which have been delineated. And certainly the qualifications and the reputation of ICMA is flawless. So, I think in that way, that when everything's done and we present, that it won't get the same kind of negativity that we've gotten on some other things because it, I think that'll bring the credibility of it. Not that our other things haven't been good, they have been good, but because it hasn't been outside people doing it, it's been criticized. And I think that we need to remove that element so that we can say very clearly, all seven of us and the administration. And I think that the citizenry will come around.
Mayor?
Mayor, put your phone.
I weigh in here.
Uh huh.
I, I support this. And John and I have talked about this before. But whatever we do, we're going to be criticized. You know, that's just a given. If you're doing anything, you're going to be criticized. We do nothing, we're going to be criticized. We try to do it internally, we're criticized. If we do it internally, we're criticized. So we've got to put them aside. I think this is, this is a good...
Good point.
But I, I do want to say, I, I think we have excellent department heads and, and excellent police department. I don't want anyone, Dan, you served many, many years in the police department. You know it's a good department. You've got chief mayor, you know that you've got a great department, okay? And I don't want any department manager to come away from this feeling like we weren't doing our job, we had to bring someone else in, or the city manager feeling like we had to bring someone else. This was, this has got to be a joint effort. But I think you guys are doing a great job, you know? And I don't want these consultants to tell us what we want to hear, you know? I want them to do totally independent, and that's what it's all about, independent. It's not like who you like or whatever, totally independent. And that's what I see this proposal is. I'm hoping also as part of the team, I look through, I know they're all government people, but maybe we can draw something from private sector, you know? I'm a, I'm a big proponent of that. We've got government, we've got public, we've got private. We've got some private sector involvement as, as well with some of these team members. I do, I do hope you've had some experience not doing, doing this only in the government sector, some private sector. But I'm excited about it, but I don't want anyone, and I'm going to say specifically the police department, you know, because, Dan, you've had experience there. You, you, if you thought you could do this on your own and had a better way, you wouldn't even have been proposing this. But chief, this is nothing, I, I don't want you or anybody, human resources, anybody to, to look at this as, hey, better bring in someone else on the outside because you're not doing your job. We're just looking for as much help as we can get. That's what we want. But how you sell this to your people when you're having to provide the facts and data and so forth is, we don't have a choice. We really don't have a choice. Look at these consultants as helping you get where you need to be in your department, you know? Some departments, they may find more than others, but look at them not as the enemy or negative, but use every tool you've got and they've got in their, in their toolbox to help you, help us be better and help you be better. Because at the end of the day, cuts have to be made. We want to make it the most productive, efficient way. And not make mistakes, you know? Again, we're going to be criticized, whatever. Please, nobody's looking at this as being negative. We've got outside consultants coming in because we can't do a job. We are doing your job, you are doing your job, we have done your job. But we're just looking for another level of expertise. It's not a negative reflection, anybody in this city should be perceived that way.
The other thing that may happen is that they may say in some areas we've cut too much.
Could be.
And, and that we're not being efficient because we don't have. So, we're ready for adjustments whichever way. I don't want to say that they're just going to say you have to cut more. I want to be open to all of, all of that, so, for the independent opinion. Councilmember Slater?
Um, you know, I, I agree with everything that's been said tonight. I, I think I said early on that this is, this is not an indictment against anybody. It's to try and help maybe achieve a greater goal here in the city. And I've heard Mary say it, I think I've heard Wade say it, transparency is a friend of ours.
Yeah.
It is not the enemy with this city, with the police department, with any department here. Transparency is going to be our friend ultimately in the end. And I really firmly believe that. Much like SafeBuilt, you heard what they had to say today about the building department people?
Excellent.
That's a theme that you will find in this city, from the police department, the fire department, IT, human resources, all, you know, I, I shouldn't list them all now because I don't want to leave anybody out. The law department, Lord knows how I feel about the law department. You're going to find that theme here. It's just we need somebody to help with the message. And I think that's really what it's all about, is you can help us with the message, we already know.
Or with the model, really. Help us with the model. It's not the message, not looking for, I'm looking for a, a model that works. Absolutely.
So, yeah. Thanks.
Councilmember to me?
The other piece of this that is appealing, we've cut back our staff in all departments And if you hire these guys, this is their job. And they can get this done in time for it to be implemented as part of the budget process. If our staff does it, we may get three departments or the police department, and this could take that much longer. And while that might be okay, if we make mistakes along the way, then you backpedal and you still haven't done the rest of them, and then you backpedal again or you go forward. And if we can have these recommendations in four to six months, then we actually can do something with them. And do something with them in a planful, regimented, progressive manner, whether it's combining, cross-training, putting people back, finding where the square picks are to go in the square holes. I don't, I don't know what that will be, but if we left this to our staff, we couldn't get this stuff done for two years. Very true.
Plus, we won't have the sharing of best practices. We won't, I don't think, we won't break through those silos, which you talk about with so many of the different issues. So, I think it really is lifting up all of those walls, looking in and, and seeing what works well elsewhere and how that can be implemented here as well. And the end result is the efficiency and effectiveness and cost savings, which we're all aiming for. That's got to be it.
Okay. Speaking of costs, Jack, would you like to talk to the last paragraph?
Of course.
No, second or last paragraph in your memo?
We identified several funding sources. Obvious ones are the general fund balance and the capital fund balance from projects that have already been completed and came in under budget. So, I'm, I'm not asking to hold a project on the shelf while we take money. I'm asking to take money from a project that's already been completed that came in under budget because it was managed very well. We do have savings from SafeBuilt, larger than we thought we would get. We have costs that we could allocate to departments that are being evaluated, even though we have a budget that does call for a great reduction in staff. Some staff members have left earlier than anticipated, which I could be funding in those departments as well. We had one early layoff in the purchasing department as another example because primarily of lack of work, because we do have an economy of scale in other areas. There's savings that we're going to achieve from wages and healthcare concessions. I know that's going to happen, and we can allocate those savings as well. I think the largest issue of, of funding is going to be that our upfront costs will have a return on investment, I would say sometime in fiscal year 2011, '12. So even if we had no real funding mechanism per se, this is a project where if we expended the money, the capital, if you will, one time, ICMA, I can't say what you had said more eloquently, it's not going to be, we stated, but they will do a job such that it'll be better than the job that I can do or my staff and I can do because of their expertise and, and global perspective. And that's going to result in a streamlined operation.
Okay. All right. Are you...
Stu?
Yes?
Having said that, John, it, having said that, so you are expecting this contract to yield you an additional $200,000 in the next fiscal year?
I would say that if the city council would, if, number one, if, if city management in partnership with the city council agreed to implement, with the council having to be in the senior partner, of course, agreed to implement all the suggestions that are made, I, I believe that there would be a cost savings as a result thereof, just based on the savings that we've had in the other departments that we've taken a look at thus far.
Okay, but my question was additional. And the reason I word it that way is because we've already planned to not have that money available. And now we're taking another $200,000, so will this generate enough to pay for itself, which would be in addition to the proposed restructuring cuts that are already on the table? Is, is it your thought that it will?
I'd like to say yes. I can't guarantee it, but I'd like to say yes. Well, Mayor Schilling will have a point about sustainability. And one of the things that ICMA is going to look at is, you know, on the cuts that we've made on several departments, were the cuts so great that they are no longer sustainable? And then do you have to add people back in?
Yeah.
I mean, that's, ICMA's not known for padding payrolls or, or people in the organization, but they're going to look at the sustainability component as well. The biggest savings that we could probably achieve, I think, would be in the area of public works, infrastructure maintenance. Can they be bigger than what we've already re, you know, we've already cut in, in our budget for the first three years? I don't know. I'm, I'm hoping that that happens.
I mean...
I think it does.
That's my concern. That, that is my concern, and it's not the first time you've heard this, right? So I would say that I, I don't want to pay for this. I think the first, the first place to get funds for this is department funding that, as available, from savings that have already occurred, that were budgeted items that, you know, now are not being spent. I, I think that that would be my first choice. And there won't be enough of that, but that kind of funding should be the first line. If we do it out of capital projects, and everybody in this room, except maybe those two guys has heard me say, nothing affects your property value more than the street in front of your house.
Right.
And our roads are bad enough that to take capital funding away from them, I, I don't think is a frugal move. But I, I do believe that if we have projects in this year's budget that have come in under, that money could be loaned because we can't schedule projects this year. So, loan that money with a payback expectation. And that may be an accounting nightmare for John and Jim, but they'll work it out, I'm sure. So, that, I, that would be the only way I would concede to capital funds being spent.
And then you had drug forfeiture, not a huge amount, but drug forfeiture.
No, I don't think they can use it.
Can't be used.
We're not allowed to use it, no.
No, that's, that was my initial.
And I also asked the MNL if we could utilize...
Right.
...funding on their, their shared services initiative. And the response I received as well, we'll take a look at it, John. So that means that we'll probably be finished and they'll still be looking at it.
Okay. Well, maybe we put that out there, the initiatives were to have money with them.
Councilmember Slater?
I agree with you. I, I would also, hopefully you wouldn't be opposed to maybe taking some money from the, the grant area that, because I think this is kind of helping in that, in that way. I'm not, I'm not talking about it all, but maybe, you know, helping, helping with that...